This is the Westwood Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October 12th. And pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 order extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law under Chapter 30A, Section 18, to allow for remote meeting participation until April 1st of 2022. The October 12th, 2021 Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. We will also grant Westwood Media the opportunity to record the meeting and ask if anyone else wishes to record it. Now, seeing no one, we will allow Westwood Media to record. Under the Chairman's Update, we have several things to discuss. And so, if I can just get my iPad here. First, there are two important dates that you need to keep in mind. We have our special town meeting and special town election dates. The special town meeting is next Monday night, October 18th, with a rain date of Tuesday, October 19th, but we won't need that. It will be at Westwood High School at Flaherty Field. Registration will begin as early as 4:00 with the official business of the town meeting starting at 5:00 PM. And then there is the special town election, which is the following Tuesday, the 26th. Residents who are registered voters will have the opportunity to vote regarding approval of funding for the proposed elementary schools' building project. In order for the proposed project to be approved, it will need two-thirds at the special town meeting and a majority vote at the special town election. A wrap-up, excuse me, on Westwood Day. The 2021 Westwood Day was held on Saturday, September 25th. Started it with fireworks after the football game on Friday night. And on Saturday, Westwood Day was held with beautiful fall day. Despite the fact rain was threatened, it did not happen. There were approximately 150 adults and 250 kids participating in the 5K road race and the fun run. Then the residents headed over, of course, to Westwood High School, to the vendor village. And we do want to just thank all of our sponsors, and I'll try to do them real quick. Platinum sponsors were both Ameresco and Prime Automotive Group. Gold sponsors were Needham Bank and FM Generator. Silver sponsors were Arch Orthopedics, CPR, which are clean portable restrooms, Denham Savings Bank, Fox Hill Village, Roach Brothers, Rockland Trust Bank, and University Station. Bronze sponsors were All Town, Dental Arts of Westwood, GVMY Insurance Agency, Master General Brigham, Northeast Security, Orange Theory Fitness, and Westwood Minute. That is our online news and information. Next year, we want your market calendars early because Westwood Day 2022 will be a special event. It will be the 10th Westwood Day, and it'll also be the 125th anniversary of Westwood. So more details will follow, and once we have a date, we will let you know so you can reserve that on the calendar. Finally, under the Chairman's Update, we want to remind people that Veterans Day is coming on November 11th, obviously. We hold a ceremony every year at Veterans Park, which is across the street from Dunkin' Donuts on High Street. And the ceremony will take place at 11:00. It's at Veterans Park. If it is predicted to be bad weather, then we will move it inside, as we always have, to the Council on Aging. You'll have Dick Pastor and myself to say a few words. We have special invitees, Senator Lynch, Senator Rush, Representative Paul McMurtry, and of course, Ms. Christine Devlin, our Gold Star Mother in Westwood. Your honor, God will be provided, of course, by the American Legion. You are encouraged to come visit us on November 11th at 11:00. Check the town website for more information. Okay, moving along to our scheduled action. We have several things before us tonight. Tonight, we have a public hearing from EverSource Gas on the grant of a location for the Dartmouth Street Vent Post. Now, just before the meeting, we understand that we do need more input from our fire chief, but we're going to open the public hearing, have N-Star present to us, and then we will postpone or continue the hearing to our next Select Board meeting once we have the input of the fire chief. So with that, we have some representatives from N-Star Gas Company.
Someone could just confirm that?
Okay, introduce yourself, and the floor is yours.
A good afternoon. If someone could please just confirm that I can be heard?
It's tough to hear you. I don't know if you can turn your microphone up a little bit.
I'm gonna try to make some adjustments here. One moment, please.
I'm going to introduce myself while John's adjusting. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm John Babiac. I'm the program manager. I support putting together the schedule. I've taken over. I don't know if you remember Taylor. Taylor has left the company, and I'm working with John in engineering to help put our GSEP program scheduled together. So hopefully, I'll be able to see and talk to some of you as the season goes on.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. This is Jared Blandino, also with EverSource. I work in community relations. I know I work pretty closely with Chris, you know, others in the DPW, you know, in the police and fire chiefs. I'm just here for support tonight. I know John's going to go through our project and what we're presenting. But, you know, I'm always available if you need any help from the community relations side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is that any better?
Yes, much better.
Okay, great. Apologies for the delay there. I guess first, asking if there's an interest in having me present a few slides that I put together to walk through the project. Tish, maybe directing this question at you. Were those slides shared with the Select Board? And if not, I'm happy to, if I'm able to, can I present on my screen?
They were not shared. We just received them about an hour ago, I think.
Yes, it was very recent. Am I able to share a screen?
You should be able to. If not, I can share.
Okay. If someone could let me know if they can see the screen in the presentation?
Yes. We can see the screen, yes.
Okay, so let me start this.
You might want to throw it in mode just to make it full screen there.
Bear with me. Apologies.
On the bottom.
All right, I'm gonna try this again. And just flip your display settings because you're showing us your presenter notes.
John, this is Jared. Do you want me to try to share?
If you would, maybe just give me one minute here, and I'll see if I can make this work. Only because if there's questions about the drawings and so forth, I'll try to make this work.
Sure.
So I'm not exactly sure, but let me ask if that's, is that big enough to? So I'm having the technical issue. It's kicking me over to the third screen. So I'll just go through these slides as they, as they're shown here. Is that sufficient in terms of size and clarity?
Yes.
Okay, so again, thank you for the opportunity to present this petition. As John Babiac, my cohort and project manager for this project, indicated, this project has been, has been in flight for some time now, specifically seven or eight years. And appreciating that it was about a year or so ago that the project was restarted, and that required having to go through another permit application process with CSX. And as things stand today, or through the, through the effort of having all of the necessary permits in hand from, from CSX, which then led us to the, to the next activity in the project, which was to seek this petition for the installation of two vent pipes alongside the casing. And at a high level, I'll just point out, and I'm going to flip a bit through these, maybe out of sequence here, to just point to the main basis for this petition being needed is a current specification requirement of CSX to install these vents alongside any casing passing underneath the rail corridor, be it an active rail corridor such as the MBTA and Amtrak corridor directly to the, to the east, or a rail spur, which is the, which is the case for this project. So it's sort of pointing out that, you know, here we, here we fall, referring to the aerial map. This is the rail spur that comes off of the main track, irrespective of its use, be it carrying passengers or simply material off of a, off of a rail spur. These vents are a CSX requirement. So that differs from the existing conditions. And so just to refer to this photograph that shows Dartmouth Street looking west, you'll, you'll notice that there aren't any, any vent pipes existing today. And essentially, the proposal is, in order to satisfy that specific specification requirement of CSX, we're coming in front of the Select Board today to request this petition to install these vent pipes, which are equivalent to these two vent pipes that currently exist at the crossing on University Avenue, which is a short distance to the, to the south of Dartmouth Street. What I, what I'm showing here in this exhibit is the, the stand pipes with the, is often referred to as a candy cane. Those two-inch pipes actually connect to the casing underneath the, the tracks and are put there as a means to then any gas, were there to be any gas that migrates along the gas main in, in the future. So with respect to the actual project itself, just bearing that concept of the vent pipes in mind, it's the, it's the plan to excavate this, first, the jacking pit, which is about 10 feet wide, 35 feet long, on the west side of the tracks, followed by an excavation of a 10 by 10 receiving pit. Once those pits have been completed, the equipment, which is referred to as this jack and bore equipment, will be set in the, in the jack and bore pit and, and essentially drill underneath the rail tracks and be received at the, at the receiving pit on the other side of the tracks. The photograph on the right shows a comparable project that was completed by EverSource under, happened to also be a CSX rail corridor in Northborough, Massachusetts this year. It gives a sense of, say, the magnitude or scale of the type of equipment that's required for, for gas distribution job, such as the one planned on Dartmouth Street. So upon that, the augering being complete, the eight-inch steel casing is, is, has been installed as a, as a part or aspect of that jack and bore scope. And once that casing is, is through and under the rail, the railroad tracks, the four-inch gas main, the new plastic main, will be installed or inserted through that, through that casing. Bearing those steps in mind, we essentially also close with, with respect to the underground work in this area. The two-inch casing vent pipes will extend off of the casing to, to the location proposed on, on the drawing. And after the pits have been backfilled and all of the work completed in this area performed, just noting a requirement that was, was brought up in earlier conversation with, with the DPW, that it's the, the understanding that that impacted area for the jack and bore operation will be repaved curb-to-curb. With that being said, I'm happy, or John Babiac, or Jared, we're happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
Let's see. I don't really have any questions. I think I would probably defer until after our fire chief has had a chance to look at it and, you know, weigh in on it. So I think until he does that, at least I'll hold my questions until after that. John or Rob?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on your last point. So the curb-to-curb paving, who was responsible for that?
That's, that's EverSource.
And that will be subject to the town's inspection at completion?
I, I would assume that that's consistent with any, with the other permits that are, that we perform the work under. In this particular case, because it's not typically the case that it's a curb-to-curb paving is completed if a, if a street is an under a paving moratorium. In this case, irrespective of the street being under a moratorium or not, it's our understanding, and it's really, the main premise for that is the fact that when you look at that footprint of the area impacted by the, the jacking pit in the receiving pit, it's prudent to complete curb-to-curb paving from those, essentially that western limit of the jacking pit to the, the eastern limit of the, of the receiving pit.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, my only questions were going to be related to the distance from the tracks of the, of the two vent pipes, but, you know, I'll wait and defer to Chief Deckers to see what they have to say.
Okay, so even for the public, we're going to hold off on questions from the public. We are going to continue this hearing to our next meeting, which is scheduled for, let's see, hello.
November 15th.
November 15th, yes, November 15th. So we're going to continue this to November 15th. And at that time, we'll be able to have our chief weigh in and give us his recommendations as well. So we'll hold off on questions. I think it'd be important to have the chief's input, which may, of course, bring up other questions, so, especially from the public. So thank you, gentlemen. We're gonna defer. Yes, yes, Mr. Herr.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman, but I would recommend that you take a motion to continue the public hearing till November 15th.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And I can make it. My only question. This, this public hearing was for the grant of location Dartmouth, Dartmouth Street Vent Post, but it's, it's one post, right? Ultimately, there'll be two?
There will be two.
Yeah, okay. So I move that the Select Board continue this hearing until our next scheduled meeting date of November 15th, 2021, for the public hearing regarding EverSource Gas grant of location Dartmouth Street Vent Posts.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
John, you have to stop sharing.
I think you can take him down, Tish, if you're a host.
Yeah, I can right now.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, moving along on the agenda, we have a regional energy planning assistance grant. So Mr. Philbin is coming in to talk to us.
Let's see. I don't have Tom on, so we'll just move forward without him right now.
Okay. Shall we, shall we wait for Tom or just vote on it?
No, just.
I'd recommend, Mr. Chairman, we move forward with the proposed action.
Okay, so this was a regional energy planning assistance grant, known as a REPA grant. And Tom was able to be awarded a $3,000 grant for the purposes to retain one or more technical assistant agencies to provide energy planning assistance to municipalities. So Tom was, will be managing the funds, and we have a $3,000 grant that we are asked to accept on, on the town's behalf. So I'll entertain a motion unless there's any questions.
I move that the board accept the regional energy assistance REPA grant of $3,000.
And I will second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you. And I vote aye as well. Okay. Moving along, let's see now.
Need to bring in Mike Myers.
We have a request. So we have a Forbes Road traffic study. Yes. Mr. Myers in?
Also.
Ms. Altman.
Mike, you're still on mute.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning. How you doing, Mike?
Good.
Welcome. All right, so we have, we have a Forbes Road traffic study, and we have a request to authorize a transfer of $25,000 to pay for a cost of the roads' traffic study. So, Mr. Myers, what is your thought process here, or take us through what your plan is?
Sure, sure. So Mike Myers with TEC, Liz Altman. I don't think you've had the chance to meet Liz yet. Liz is the director of our traffic services group. So Todd had reached out to us and expressed that there were some concerns with commercial truck traffic along Forbes Road, in particular, cutting through from Everett to Canton. It's an area that TEC is very familiar with, from the Forbes Road sidewalk project from about six years ago. And then our current work at the early stages of Canton Street. Basically, from a high level, it's essentially three phases. Go ahead and get out there, do a very detailed data collection, detailed review of that data, to, in particular, to quantify the amount of cut-through trucks that are going along Forbes Road, based on the findings. Then as a third phase, essentially evaluate potential intersection improvements at Everett and Forbes. Concurrent to this, there would be a couple of public meetings. The first would be at the very early stages, more of a listening session. And then a, the second would be more of a public informational meeting to report back the findings of the study. And then lastly, we would come back and provide an update to the Select Board, some other, some of our other projects. That's from the 30,000-foot view. Liz can certainly answer any more detailed questions, much better than I.
Okay. So assuming that we approve this tonight, when would, when would the work begin? When would the, I guess, collection of the data begin?
We're probably, good evening, I'm Liz Altman. We're probably two weeks to three weeks out on, on scheduling account vendor at this point. So we would get them underway as soon as we could. And sometimes they have an opening, and we can sneak in a little earlier. But we would like to do it before the holidays.
Okay. John or Rob?
Yeah.
Or just the duration?
Any questions?
The duration of the study in terms of the, the data observation?
We know that Amazon has some extensive shift times, which is the nearest truck facility. And so we are studying for two full days, turning movement counts at the intersection of Everett and Forbes from 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night for two full days. And then peak hour counts at Canton and Everett and Forbes and Canton during the peak hours to same track those vehicles through to the other side. And then an ATR, which is an automatic traffic recorder, tube counter on Forbes Road for three days to get volumes and speeds. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, John?
No. I move that the Select Board approve a transfer of $25,000 from the Select Board's reserve account to pay for the cost of the Forbes Road traffic study.
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay. See you out there on the corner.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys. Have a good day.
All right, next on our agenda, we have a regulatory agreement for the homes at 45. And I think Nora is coming in to talk to us, as well as Dan Green.
Hello.
Hi, Nora. Welcome.
Thank you. I believe Dan is joining. There he is. So this is a request. The, the board has a signed regulatory agreement dating back to September of 2020 for the two affordable townhomes at the homes at 45 on Poverty Street. And the, the amount, the maximum sales price that's listed in that current regulatory agreement is $2,072,700. You now have a request from Dan Green to increase that to correspond to the current HUD income guidelines. And the request would be an increase to $296,800 for the new maximum sales price. And I think Dan has a presentation to make to you, or a demonstration of why he's making this request.
Right, I thought that you might like to hear why we want to do it. So the basic part of it is, this is my understanding, this is the regular process that HUD wants the home, or DHCD wants the homes repriced according to current HUD guidelines to make sure we're not exceeding them, because HUD income levels can go up, but they can also go down. And so they would want us to redo this calculation. And when we did it, we found that back in September of 2020, we had priced it at 272,700, as Nora just mentioned. And now the level is allowed to be 296,800. And the main reason for these, you're supposed to be priced at 80% of AMI adjusted medium income. These are priced at 70% of AMI, just to be on the safe side if something has changed. Our consultant prefers to do it that way. I think the HCD likes it that way as well. So that effectively lowers the price. In addition, over the last year, I'm sure people have seen in the newspapers, our costs have gone through the roof. In addition, over the last year, I'm sure people have seen in the newspapers, our costs have gone through the roof. So NEHB has estimated that lumber prices alone, the increase in the past twelve months has been thirty six thousand dollars a home. We did a calculation of what our costs have done from August of twenty twenty to August of twenty twenty one. And for we have two affordable home styles and one of them has gone up eighty thousand dollars in that one year timeframe. And that's the that's the average of what we're seeing across all our homes. So it's substantial. We are building these homes at a loss. That's part of how we factor it into the equation of what we do. You were gracious enough to allow us to build forty two homes in Westwood. And we understand that this is part of that, that we are taking a loss, but we wanted to reduce the amount of that by the twenty one thousand dollars that we're allowed to increase these homes. In addition, at the town's request, we are making these homes identical to all the market rate homes in our community in terms of where bedrooms are located, square footage. It's not exactly required by DHC guidelines, but we felt it was in the best interest of those who are going to be our new residents and how they'll fit into the community. And also, we felt it was a reasonable request. So given that, we would very much like to increase our price to the allowed amount of two ninety six, eight hundred. And I have some newspaper articles and pictures of other homes that are affordable that are for sale. It's basically, we're at the two ninety six eight in Bolton and in Gloucester for similar for two bedroom homes, but much smaller square footage. That was the other part. Our square footage is seventeen hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty two hundred square feet, whereas these other towns where they're pricing at the virtually the same amount. One of the homes is nine hundred square feet and the others, I think, sixteen hundred square feet. So we're providing a much bigger home as well. And I'm.
Is Nora, is our only option to leave it at two seventy two or to go to two ninety six? Do we have room in between?
You have complete discretion here. So the current regulatory agreement that you approved, and it was also approved by the Department of Housing Community Development, is at two seventy two, seven. You can increase it to the requested amount of two ninety six, eight. You could put it somewhere in the middle. You could leave it where it is. It's completely up to you. The one concern here is just that these are age restricted units, so it's not a case of, you know, a first time home buyer coming in and buying this and having the ability for their income to grow over time. Most of the residents that we're looking at that would be considering these homes are unlimited incomes.
But the two ninety six eight number is the the DCD number, right?
That comes from HUD income guidelines. It uses the eighty percent median income, or in this case, seventy percent median income that's calculated by HUD now for twenty twenty one. When this was last done, it was using the HUD income guidelines from twenty twenty, and it was maxed out at the at the highest that you could that of individuals earning the maximum income amount allowable under this could afford to pay for a home. So now, because those income limits have gone up, Mr. Green is requesting an increase that that brings it back up to the maximum under the new income limits. So essentially, if a homeowner, if you if you do make the changes requested, a homeowner will pay about twenty four thousand more for the home, and it'll come out to about a hundred and fifty a month increase in housing related costs, taxes, insurance, mortgage payments that they would assume compared to what the what the amount is now. And to give you another idea of what what that amounts to, the income needed for this new price would be approximately seventy nine thousand six hundred dollars a month. I'm sorry, year is what the what the new purchasers would have to make. So that's the equivalent of about six thousand six hundred dollars a month. That's what the the property owner would have to make in order to buy one of these homes.
Can I answer that, Nora?
I have any questions, John?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I think Mr. Green wanted to go.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. I think Nora, you did a great description of it. And this is really reflecting our cost increase and meeting not only the spirit, but the letter of the law. And yes, it is pricing it up at the highest of what's allowed, but please remember that we did seventy percent of AMI, not the eighty percent that was required. So we actually are under. And this has to go to DHCD after you vote tonight.
It does. So if the if the board approves it, then DHC would also have to approve it.
Yes.
But DHCD has made it clear that it's at the board's discretion.
And really, this is to recoup the the increased costs that we're seeing.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Question for you. What are the what is the current asking price for the non affordable housing units right now?
They're selling for one point. The the most recent closings that anyone would see if they went to the registry of deeds is one point one three, I think it is up to one point two four million dollars. That's what the market rates are. So we're selling this for somewhere hopefully close to two ninety six, eight hundred for under three hundred. And it will be, they own it. They're just caps on how much they can sell it for, because they'll come back when they go to sell, and they'll come to you. And we'll have the same discussion. What is the HUD income level and what is the proposed, what is the allowed price? I believe that's how it works. Nora, is that correct?
What will happen is DHCD will set the resale value based on the maximum income that you cement. So so if someone was looking to sell the home today, if they had already purchased it for the two seventy two, seven, they could turn around and sell it today for two ninety six, eight. That would be the maximum price that DHCD would allow for sales, because the maximum price is always based on the HUD income guidelines.
Exactly. And and to add to that, the sometimes people will price under what's allowed by HUD, but usually that's towns that are farther out that have less access to downtown Boston. Westwood is a fabulous town, as you all know. And in Norwood Station, you have access to a train to downtown very close by. So our consultant MCO associates has no questions or concerns that in their minds that these will sell and be very popular. And we have two homes.
So it's interesting. So the further you leave it below the HUD max, you actually could incentivize people to turn over.
That is one way to look at it, yes, because they would make a profit.
Can people take the equity out?
I'm not, I don't know the answer to that. I would assume they could get a, I know they have to get a loan. Their DHCD offers it.
With the town's consent, an owner of an affordable home can refinance and take up up to ninety seven percent of the value of their home with the with the town's approval. Town and DHCD both have to sign off on that.
But is the value equated at the DHCD max rate?
It is.
It's interesting.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, John, since you're doing motions, I'll let you pick which one you want to do.
Well, you know, I I actually think I'm going with with my own. I mean, I, you know, I guess there has been some, you know, unforeseen costs, and I don't want to leave that twenty four thousand dollar gap. I guess, you know, I think I feel more justified with that twenty one thousand dollar amount that you cited. I don't feel compelled to jump just because DHCD jumped. I don't know if others have thoughts.
Well. Yeah, I mean, I'm going to ask you, John, I think we've made several concessions of these, you know, we did the changed a couple of the apartments, et cetera. And what they're selling for now was above what they were going to sell for. So even though they're they're higher costs, they're actually much higher in sales. So I'm inclined, you know, for affordable housing units to not to not increase it. And that's my proposal, but you know, there are three of us. So I'm inclined not to vote to increase it up to the nine, two ninety six, eight.
Yeah, Michael, I'm in a similar place, especially given that you're talking about, you know, seniors will be more on a fixed income as the the audience for who would be vying for these homes. I guess the question that I have is, is there a third option or anything like that where, you know, Dan, you would be willing to put a portion of whatever we are able to agree on into a Waha fund or anything like that, Nora, is cannot be done? To help to raise some of the incremental costs that Green has borne due to increased lumber and and other construction costs as a way to maybe help us secure additional inventory.
So I don't think anything like that's been done before. I don't see that it would be a problem, though. I think I I lean towards Pat on a the question about whether that's a possibility.
Yeah, I think we would have to take a look at the at the actual development agreement and and renegotiate. And you've got to let us know exactly what you want there. And myself and Mr. Green's lawyer, Mike Terry, I would probably have to work that out.
Is there urgency? Is there? Is there some sort of milestone date coming up that's driving this decision tonight? Or could Chris kind of do some vetting offline and we bring it up again on the fifteenth?
So I think they're getting ready to have the housing lottery. You really need to advertise the price that the units will be sold at.
It's a requirement. So we're ready to close the first house in mid-December. And we need to have a price. And so if we wait, it'll push out when the auction actually occurs.
If you're closing in mid-December, have have you already gone to the lottery and selected people then?
No, we're building the house. And now we're at the stage where we'll pick the homeowner or the consultant will.
The lottery advertisement has to note the price of the home.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, you know, I guess where I'm struggling is that I agree with Michael on the affordability. I I don't. I'm concerned that we just hand over a house to someone with all of this equity and incentivize potentially a turnover. I'm not sure that's good either. So I'm just trying to struggle with those two thoughts. I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on. That's why I was kind of looking for some.
I mean, John, looking at it this way, I mean, the chances of someone turning over the house for that kind of small money is is, you know, almost impossible in Westwood. Why would someone want to leave that out there, you know, and after going through all of those steps to get it? I don't think anyone's turned their house over that fast. You know, market likes to flip. I don't see, I don't see it happening that fast.
May I speak again?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan.
I I mean, I didn't come back just because I'm trying to get every last penny on this. Because obviously, it's time and effort on our part, too. But these are real costs, and I feel that we've been above board on everything. And anytime the town has asked for anything, we've negotiated by saying yes. Now, you were very kind and you let us put two homes on one of the single family lots that we were going to build. But making these homes the same as the others is substantial cost to us. And we did that because, honestly, because you asked. And we felt we could do it because it was only two homes, but there was a real cost to that. So I would like to see some increase. And I'm happy to. We're talking a total of, let's see, for we're going up twenty, we're requesting twenty four thousand dollar increase per home. So that's forty eight thousand for the two. So if we were to do that, I'd be happy to give ten thousand to Waha without making it an agreement. Just do it. And write that check next week.
So Pat, can we do that as a motion?
I I would Mr. Green's directness. My law school training tells me any deal, any contract for the exchange of rights and land needs to be in writing, but via the statute of frauds. So I think we'd have to get something in writing, but
we could take them.
Get that done fairly quickly if if the guidelines are firm.
Okay. So, Michael, you okay if I make a motion along those lines?
How, what number are you looking at, John? Are you going to go to two ninety six?
Two ninety, you're right. So so the motion would be that I move that the select board sign the amended regulatory agreement for the homes at forty five for the two affordable housing units to increase the maximum sale price of the unit from two seventy two, seven to two ninety six, eight, subject to a ten thousand dollar donation to Waha from the Green Company.
I would second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
I don't know. But so is so so be it.
I just want to say, I think you have been above board throughout the process, both in my time on the select board as well as on the planning board before that. And, you know, the increase in construction materials is real. So I'm sympathetic there. I appreciate the concession on the donation to Waha.
Thank you very much. It actually, you guys have been firm, but a pleasure to work with. It has been very direct and very above board. So we really appreciate that, too.
Mr. Green, I suspect you'll instruct Mr. Terry to get ahold of me tomorrow.
I shall. I'm gonna, he's the next phone call after I hang up here.
Very good, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dan. The the development was great. And I know a number of people who live there and they're thrilled with the developments.
We love it. And it's so many people who are from Westwood who are who are coming in. It's really nice to see. And a nice mix of people.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora.
Thank you.
All right. Tish, you have Dottie Powers and Tal coming in to see us. Next on our agenda is the federal census re precincts and new boundary lines. This was before us once before in a preliminary matter, but now we have more, I think, more detail for us.
Hello. Good evening.
Tal.
Tal. Tal, Zisklowski and I are here tonight. Tal is our GIS analyst. And we're here to present to the select board the new precinct lines as a result of the twenty twenty federal census. In the last decade, Westwood has grown by one thousand six hundred and forty eight residents with a total population of sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty six residents. The state census division has worked with us to ensure our precinct lines have been drawn according to specific criteria. Each precinct must be composed of compact and contiguous territory without protruding fingers, which you'll see when we show you the maps, or long tails to the extent possible. Precincts must be bounded by the central line of streets or other well-defined boundaries, such as streams or other bodies of water, railroad tracks, power lines, or other clearly visible geographic figures. No precinct may contain more than four thousand residents. Every precinct's population must be within five percent of the average precinct's population. State law requires the select board to vote to approve the new precinct lines. We will determine this applying the guidelines of Mass General Law, Chapter fifty four, Section twenty four, designation of a new polling place. This is because of the increase in population, there'll be a fifth polling location. And we'll also work with the state elections division to ensure that the location we choose will meet all accessibility guidelines. Once it's determined and deemed suitable, we'll meet again with the select board, who will have to approve new locations. Right now, what we're going to do is we're going to show you a current precinct map, which is derived from our twenty ten federal census, and Tal will show you that. Share a screen and show us the existing precinct map right now, showing our four polling places, four precincts in town. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. So what you can see here, the thick black lines actually presents the old precincts, the four precincts configuration. I would please like to show you the twenty twenty to twenty thirty configuration, which is is made with five precincts. Just to, I know that this could be a little bit overwhelming or a little bit understandable, so I'm going to make the map look a little bit clear. I will take the streets off. Please let me know if you want it back or we can go back and forth with this presentation to make things as explainable as possible. So so as I said, this
uh so as I said, this is our new precincts. And I would like, if you would like to to look at the population, uh this is the number of population that we'll have in every precinct. Um just for a little bit, I would please like to remove the twenty-ten precincts, so you will be able to see the new precincts. Uh we can also look at all the numbers in this table here. Uh I as Dottie said, we cannot have a precinct more than four thousand residents, and you can see that we're complying, fully complying with this requirement, but even more important than that, uh we cannot have more than five percent variance between every precinct, meaning that if we'll take our total population, which is six, six, sixteen hundred, two hundred and sixty-six resident, and we will divide it into five precincts, our average or target population number will be three seven thousand and two hundred and fifty-three residents. If you'll take five percent above that or five percent below this number, this is our two uh borders. I mean, uh we cannot have a precinct with more than thirty-four, three thousand four hundred and sixteen residents or a precinct with less than thirty thousand and ninety residents. So if you can, you look at at the population of each precinct, you can see that we are very much standing in this uh requirements. But if if I want to, if but also think something that I think that we we were able to do very nicely is to keep the neighborhoods intact between the different precincts. Yeah, that's it.
Questions? Does anybody have any questions on the map?
Yeah, could you just, I don't know if this is possible visually. I'm just trying to figure out the streets that are the dividing lines between the precincts.
Of course.
Back to the first second one. There you go.
I'm just, to make it a little bit better, I'm gonna switch to that labeling method. And I can zoom in and out, so you we will be able to see the different precincts. Uh would you like me to start from here, maybe?
That's perfect, yeah.
Okay, so please uh guide me and tell me if you want me to zoom in, out, move forward, north.
Get a zoom, get a zoom in for me.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so that's High Street, okay.
Yes, High Street. Uh and we have here Pond Street, uh Greenacre Road, and Glen Glen Road all kept under the same precinct, precinct number one.
And it's and as you can see, it's, we try to always keep the major roads as dividers.
Right.
But that's what I was just looking at, yeah. That's great. And Dottie, have you thought about like a fifth polling lo- location? Are you gonna have two precincts at one place?
To be honest with you, John, there's um, we have a few ideas that we're thinking about. You know, we're thinking about possibly combining all five into one. Combining two into one. We just have to, there's a lot of factors involved. We have to have somebody from the Secretary of State's Elections Division come out. Once we can determine a new location, we have to make sure everything is accessible, handicap accessible, there's enough parking. So there's a lot of factors involved, but we will be working. So our next step really is, once this is approved by the select board tonight, we have a deadline to get it into the LEDRC, the local election redistrict, redistricting um commission. And once they approve this, so so what happened is the Census Bureau for the state came up with this map. And we looked at it and we made a few changes because we didn't want, we wanted all neighborhoods to pretty much stay intact, as Tal mentioned. And so the next step is, this has to go, once you sign off on this tonight, this goes to be approved by the LEDRC. And then once that happens, we know that these precincts are gonna stay where they are. And and also take, keep in mind that this is gonna be for the next ten years, next century. This won't change again until twenty thirty.
So one Just go, sorry, to the right, the red, the the red u- upper right, what what's that main street?
Uh Providence Highway. Were you talking about that?
Yes.
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 That's great.
So, Dottie, I I I noticed um obviously, a couple of them had had to have changed with the addition, right? So will it be easy for voters to know once the polling places are decided upon where they were and where they will go?
Absolutely. So what we'll be doing, Rob, is we'll put something Tal will put together in her mapping. A person can just put in their address and they'll be able to see where they're going to vote. We'll send a a mailing that's required to every household. We'll have it on the website. Um, you know, we'll do all kinds of outreach so that people do know where they're going to be voting and what changes are going to be taking place.
Uh if I can add to that, the town has the capabilities to create a very uh simple and user-friendly application, which will be available online through desktops, uh cellular phones, et cetera, that you will be able, A, to see the map and zoom like, just like that, zoom in and out and see where your address, and you will also have a search and capabilities that you will uh be able to type your address here, and you will get a pop-up window that will tell you which precinct you are and where is your polling address.
That's great.
But this is the biggest change we've had here, you know, many centuries. So the last one, two thousand and ten, was very insignificant, very small change, but this one here is pretty significant with the fifth precinct that we'll be adding on.
Okay, I move that the select board vote to approve the new precinct boundaries plan and submit a certified signed letter of the vote to the local election districts review, L E D R, by October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Tal, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Tonight. To new business.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I was, I I lost some audio. Um so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that once this is signed, after your vote this evening, once this is signed on off by the state, we'll be able to put that um the maps on the website, so residents can do the search that Tal was speaking of. We just want to make sure it's signed off by this on the state before we put that up on the website for people to use that tool.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Deckers, welcome, chief.
Hey, how are you?
You're here because the West Excellent, excellent. So a resident needs to donate a grill, a pellet grill and smoker to the Westwood Fire Department. In order, in order to get a new one, I guess.
Well, yeah, the manufacturer Yeah, the manufacturer required that they weren't just gonna hand them a brand-new one for the minor defect that they had to make a donation to their local fire department. So when they stopped by the firehouse to do that, of course, I checked with the troops and the troops were more than welcoming to uh take this very nice smoker, even though it had a minor defect, um and be able to utilize it at the firehouse. And I just wanted to get your approval to allow that donation, um just to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
That's great.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Hearn.
I uh been in the habit of refurb refurbishing grills for a few years now. Uh and I can tell you that you can, they are of de minimis value i- in the used marketplace. Uh once I get through with them, they're worth some money, uh but uh they they really have almost no value in the second-hand market.
Okay, well, I'll move, gonna find a nice phone.
I move the select board accept a resident's donation of a pellet grill smoker to the Westwood Fire Department.
And I'll second that.
All right, Mistakey?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Um be sure to let us know when we can come over for dinner.
I will do that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, next we have a memorandum of agreement for our Westwood Police Superior Officers Association. So, Chris, did you, I suppose you want to take the lead on this one? You're well-versed in in what's happened.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is a a one-year agreement for the current fiscal year, fiscal year twelve with our Westwood Police Superior's Officers Association. Uh this inclu- this, uh they will receive a one and a half percent cost of living adjustment, which is the same that the board has authorized for our non-represented groups. This contract did expire on June thirtieth of of twenty twenty-one. This contract, this proposal will go through July, from July first twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um this also includes some other changes, which include uh an increase in the detail rate to sixty dollars per hour. Um this includes um the addition of June nineteenth as a uh a town observatory holiday. And uh there are some housekeeping language, um making the uh the collective bargaining agreement general throughout, um making sure that it com- it matches up with the change in the charter. Um and also increasing um some night differential compensation, uh which is gonna be equivalent to what we have with our police union. And that's what we have for the for the fiscal year uh twenty twenty-one. We will, um if the court is inclined to support this, we will continue with our negotiations with the Police Officer Superior Association for a three-year deal after this.
Okay. I think we've had this before, so I I don't have any questions, John or Rob?
No additional questions.
No. Then Mistakey, I'll attend a motion.
I move the board sign a memorandum of agreement for a one-year contract for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two with the Westwood Police Superior Officers Association.
And I'll second that.
Hey, Mistakey?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, thank you. Nice work. Okay, moving along. Uh Mr. Hearn, this might be the only one that that you might want to get involved in. So we have a, we're asking for a waiver, a conflict waiver letter for Pierce Atwood L L P as special counsel. Uh I fully understand it, and I'm sure Mistakey understands, but for those people that don't, would you care to explain on that one?
Dan Bailey has been, and he's on, and he can correct me if I state something wrong. He's been special counsel to to Westwood for the duration of the University Station project. Uh as many people know, we've been involved in some discussions with Dana Farber about a potential facility down there. Uh Dana Farber went to Dan's firm, uh and they want him to, they want Dan's firm, not Dan himself. They want someone in his firm to represent them in for uh human resource and and for, is it labor issues as well, Dan?
Um not so much labor, but um resources, employment, Title IX, that sort of stuff.
So this is not unusual when dealing with a lawyer uh in in Dan's position, working for a large firm who have very good specialty areas. What has to happen is, there's needs to be a waiver of the conflict of interest. Dan's firm will need to set up what they call a Chinese wall and prevent any crossover between what Dan does for us and what Dan's other specialty area at his firm does for Dana Farber, and never the twain shall meet. I believe we've done this for Dan in the past on a couple other occasions. Uh Dan will make sure that none of his associates that work for him in his land use area will go anywhere near any of the human resource issues on another part of Dan's farm, and you have to, you can waive the conflict of interest based on those representations. Happy to answer any further questions.
Yeah, we have signed them in the past before, Pat. I do recall doing that for Dan once before. Um and as I like to say, Dan has to answer to a higher authority than the Westwood Board of Selects, the Select Board. So Dan will do what he has to do, but I'm willing to sign the consent in so that uh your firm can still make some money from Dana Faber.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, too, if I recall reading the information correctly, the uh attorneys that would handle the employment side are segregated physically as well, and most of them are up in Maine, if I recall.
Um actually, the most of them are in um Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
Good, Rob?
Yeah.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Uh I move the select board accept the conflict or interest waiver for Dan Bailey, Pierce Atwood, L L P with respect to representation for Dana Faber Cancer Institute on other matters not related to the existing work for the town of Westwood.
I would second that motion.
Okay, Mistakey?
Aye.
Mr. Gotti?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have our select board meeting date review. So Trish, um Tish has put a couple dates in front of us. Um October eighteenth, November fifteenth, December sixth, and December twentieth. Um and we may have uh another one, too, right, Chris, that we're talking of perhaps we might need at some point. But for right now, we're currently starting at six o'clock, or as we did five o'clock tonight. Question is, do we want to start and go back to in-person meetings in the Gillette Room? Um I don't know, John, what's your thought on that, John?
I would. I would go back.
I'm sorry, what?
I would go back. I think we should go back.
I don't have a preference either way. I do know that if we're gonna go back live, I would need you to push it back to the seven o'clock start time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, because, I mean, everyone's trying to get home, trying to get something to eat in time, then I think we'd have to go back to seven o'clock. All right, so um Chris, what's the likelihood of being able to do a hybrid for the public? I know it didn't work out so well with the FinCom the first time, but it was better the second time.
It certainly did. Um well, we would, we would work with uh Westwood Media um and to make sure that that hybrid worked as well. We tested it out um in the Gillette Meeting Room. Um it's worked out well, Tish, and I'm a key member of that testing group. It has worked well, and um it'll be a great test for us with the continuation there.
Okay, so why don't we plan to do this? Why don't we plan at least for the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one? We'll do it at seven o'clock. And we'll do it in person in a Gillette Room, and then based on how things go, we can make the decision till December sixth and December twentieth. That sounds
Talking, you're talking in person, so hybrid for November fifteen, in person and in Zoom.
Correct.
All right.
Correct. And then we can see, see how things go, and we can make a decision on the sixth and the twentieth after that. And we'll be back to seven o'clock.
The expectation for anybody who has business before the board would be they they have the option of coming in or doing remote.
Correct, correct, yeah. So, and then Tish has given us a schedule um attached to that, but so Tish, you put the uh to the to be decided for the fifteenth in person or hybrid, I guess, is what it will be.
Seven P M, correct.
Yeah, and then leave the December ones as still to be decided.
If I could just quickly point out, um, Mr. Chairman, just the November fifteenth will be the tax classification hearing. So we do have to post and advertise that. Um and and make sure that that goes smoothly and we uh accomplish that that night because we kind of, you know, are up against deadlines for submitting that after that meeting.
Okay. Yep.
So that means it will be seven P M hybrid, right? Seven P M hybrid for that meeting. Okay.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Pam, for that. Okay, last thing we have, under old business, we have appointments and reappointments to boards and committees. So we have several vacancies that are still being posted. We're looking for one member for the audit committee. We are looking for two members. Um that we have two to reappoint, correct?
We did.
To the recreation.
And they're both here tonight. You have Mr. Lipton for the audit committee, and you have Katie Collins for the recreation department. A question, excuse me.
Excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
So so, Dan, tell us why you'd like to serve on the audit committee. Give us your best sell.
So I guess quick background for me, I'm a partner at Ernst &amp; Young. I specialize in state and local taxes. Uh I've been in the accounting field since I graduated. I specialize in state and local taxes. I've been in the accounting field since I graduated college a long time ago. But more importantly, I guess my best sell is I love Westwood. I've been a rest, a Westwood resident for about eight and a half years. I've got two kids in the school system, both at Thurston Middle School. My wife is on the personnel board. She's been telling me, you know, put your, put some of your skills to good use with what you do as part of the town, and this seemed like the perfect opportunity for me. I I interact with audit committees at companies all the time. And I think I can bring a lot of value in being on the other side of that and working with the town.
Excellent. Well, and and if Pam and Chris gave you the the thumbs up, I'm I'm all for it, so. John or Rob, anything?
Nothing additional, then thank you for your wife for pushing you to do this and thank you for stepping up to do it.
Thank you. I move that we appoint Mr. Daniel Lipton to the Audit Committee for term to expire in twenty twenty-five.
Nope, he's twenty twenty-two. He's replacing, right? I'm Fred Steves.
Okay, I stand corrected. For a term to expire in twenty twenty-two, I didn't wanna make it too short. Dan, we will automatically reappoint you to twenty twenty-five, okay?
I'll make sure I put my best foot forward.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Well, you know, they always say, careful what you wish for, Dan, so your wife might be having second doubts later on, but we appreciate you stepping up, so thank you.
I'm ready and I truly appreciate it too, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so we have one person to appoint to the Recreation Committee. So, hi Katie, how are you?
I'm great, how you doing?
All right, so Katie, good, good. We all have paperwork, but tell everyone who's out in Zoom land, tell us about yourself.
Sure, my name is Katie Collins. I live on Arcadia Road. I've been a Westwood resident since two thousand thirteen, technically. We moved in late of, actually, early two thousand fourteen, but we moved in with our in-laws first. I was recently a member of the Westwood Younglins Club for a very long time, about eight years. And I'm getting to the point where my kids are starting to enter the Westwood Public School System. I feel like I've done my work with the club, having been on several committees, having been the treasurer, the president of the club, and I wanted to get more involved in different committees in the town. So I reached out to the Rec Rec Commission, we had a meeting with them. I joined in one of their meetings, it seemed like a good fit, and I'm excited to join their team and help the rec department put on different programs and give them some feedback as to what they're already doing for the town.
Excellent. Well, thank you, well, welcome and
Tish, what's the
I understand that the kids are getting older, you met, you met with Chris? Let's see. There is a twenty twenty-four, I think is the term, John.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I
Met with Chris and you met with Dan, yeah, go ahead, John.
We're on a bad time delay, Michael, sorry. I move that we appoint Katie Collins to the Westwood Recreation Commission for a term to expire in twenty twenty-four.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations, thank you, Katie. All right, we have open positions for the Westwood Media Center. We're looking, still looking for Westwood Media Center. We have multiple positions at the Conservation Commission, I guess up to nine. So we are still looking for volunteers in the town. And let's see. So Chris, what am I doing with the second position in the rec department? Are we putting that up for a vote or no, or are we just?
Well, is Ian or is Ian or Bob on?
No.
No. I mean, I'd like to hear from them.
They were not, well, we we did not invite them, this, that was not, they were not on the agenda. The two appointments were Dan and Katie.
I mean, our tradition is that people come and you have to speak on behalf of applicants or the applicants speak, so I think that's important.
We won't take any action on that. Yes, that would be fun. Okay, the last thing we have, if my agenda is correct, is a approval of regular meeting minutes from the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
I move approval of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Okay, as you heard earlier, our next meeting will be on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. It will be in the Gillette Meeting Room at seven o'clock in the evening. We will have lots of things to talk about, but please don't forget about the special town meeting next Monday night and then the special town election on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Seeing nothing further, take a motion to the adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Gotti.
Aye.
Mr. Hickey.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you next week, Monday night. Thank you.
Good night.